Okay, welcome this evening to the City Commissioned Meetings of June 20th. We have a forum, so we'll call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is invocation. Pastor Tom Gaskell is not here this evening. Gene Plummer, would you have, has volunteered to lead us in invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all the blessings that you give us. I just ask tonight, as you be with this body of governors that, and you would give them the wisdom to do what you want them to do, which will be best for El Dorado. And I thank you for each of their service. And thank you for just having a wonderful city to live in. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is personal appearances. We have with us Gene Plummer and Linda Baines with the Frontier Western Celebration.
First of all, thank you for having us here tonight. And Vince, I'm not here to give you an award, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Nor any of the rest of you either. We're happy to be able to present to you some information about the Frontier Western Celebration. And I'm going to give you a little brief history of it. Not too long after Herb came, we had done several, El Dorado Main Street had done several festivals, several opportunities. And we hadn't done one for a while, and the state called and said, you know, it's time for you to do another festival. So we said, okay. So got together with Darryl Bitney, and David Ellis, and Kelly Rice, and myself. And we knew that it needed to be something western, because we figured out some time ago that El Dorado was kind of a western town. So we invited some folks to get together to talk about that. Herb was there, and Jim Stumpf was there, and there were several other people there. We actually had a 13-year-old there that was going to give us some ideas. And Herb had just come back from Tennessee. And he said, I think it'd be good, I did have rodeo. So my brother-in-law was there, and he was an old bull rider. And he said, well, you know bull riding is the big thing today, so let's do that. So the group agreed that it would be a bull ride. So we got a committee together, and a quite eclectic group of people of many ages. Jim Stumpf was at that meeting, and I remember Herb looked at him, and he said, I said, when we name it, it's going to be Frontier or something. And Herb looked at Jim, and he said, that's going to cost you a lot of money. You remember saying that? Jim said, that's okay, we have a lot of money. And we got the group together, the committee was formed, and they kept coming. And Chase, how did you get involved in public service?
You called me and got me on that committee. Whenever team calls, you go.
Well, I hope that's true.
Hasn't been so far.
Anyway, we had a good time. We had a lot of people. This was a thing that really appealed to the refinery folks. They jumped right on board. They had a number of people who came on board, and are still on board with us for financial help. And they also had people from the refinery who volunteered to help us. And one of those is Barb Gomez, and she is still with us, does the vendors for the festival. And it's been exciting to see over the years, we got people involved in the committee that had never been involved in volunteer service before. And some of them are still there, and that's exciting. That was 11 years ago, because it took us about a year to get on board. And we found, we knew that Burden had a rodeo, so we called them, and they said, we don't know how to do this, but we need somebody to help guide us. So they referred us to Matt Williams, who became our stock producer. He's still with us, and he has guided us through a lot of things over the year. You can read the history in that old book I gave you. And, but I'm going to say that one of the most important parts of that early year was that not only did we have Holly Frontier on board, but we had the city on board. I came to the City Commission at that time, and they gave their wholehearted approval of the city being involved. So the city became our other partner, and we certainly appreciate that. And it's nice to have that partnership, have it back again. And I remember when we said that it was a Main Street event, and we wanted to have it downtown. Now, there's not an arena downtown. And I said, Herb, can you build an arena? And he said, I believe we can. And so that pile of dirt you see over there by the Civic Center becomes our arena at one point. And as far as I know, we're the only community in this area that has a bull ride downtown, where you have to build the arena every year. And we appreciate that so much. And I just want to say another thing, too. The city staff is so important to us. We cannot do any event in this community that involves the public without city staff. And we appreciate them so much. And they've always been very generous to work with. And we're excited to have that same opportunity this year with you guys. And just want to thank El Dorado, and particularly the commission, for what you've been able to do for us over the years. 10 years and 25 years for Frontier for the Walter River Festival this year, and so it's been quite a ride. Linda's going to tell, this is Linda Baines, and she's going to tell you about what's happening this year.
This year. You have the schedule of events in front of you also, and a lot of it is very similar to what we've been doing in the past 10 years. We've, something we're going to do that we haven't done for a few years, and we're going to do the, an economic impacts study. We want to find out, where are all these people coming from, and how does that impact our community? And from the list of sponsors that you have there, you'll see that the, probably more than half of them aren't from this area. It's sponsors that are coming in from out of state. And we get a lot of money from out of states, that that's got to be a big impact right there. So we're very proud of that. You also, not only have many sponsors there, but also in-kind sponsors. So there's a lot of room for folks that may not have extra dollars to give, but they've got something else that they can give, or they can help out in other ways. And you'll see a lot of that also. But we are going to survey the people, find out where they're coming from, how long they're staying, and see if we can't find out what those numbers are. We did it a few years ago, and it's very impressive. We also have, we just want to spread the word, that it is coming up. It's going to start August the 4th through the 7th. And the Ranch Rodeo is the first event, and that's always one of my favorites. And that will be on Thursday night, August the 4th.
That's our local folks.
Yeah. That's Butler County, and the teams are always full, and it's strictly the working Butler County Cowboys. The, but we would like for you guys to be a part of it also. And Vince, I know that last year you got on the announcer's stand, and it was very kind words, what you said about us. And we would love to have you be on the announcer's stand again. We have saved a bull for Herb to ride, because he is so much into them. So you could probably announce that.
Eight seconds.
He doesn't act too excited about that, what's wrong?
Oh, I'm excited, but I'm hoping it's Old Hereford.
Old Hereford. So, but anyway, we do, again, we just want to thank you for all the support that you've given us. And we will be back just before the event, so that we can present you with your VIP passes, because we want you all to be there and party with us. So, any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you for this information.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to it. Next on our agenda is public comment. Anybody wish to address the commission on public comment? It's not the public hearing we're having later, this is just public comment. Seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to consent agenda minutes. And consent agenda have been placed in your packet, and a chance to review them. I would, any questions from the commission on the consent agenda? Being none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I remember that the consent agenda, as presented, be approved.
Second. Okay, so we move in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda is the Tuanda Avenue assessments. We've had private streets done, and it's been done for some months now. A chance to understand all of the costs associated with that, and the formula that I guess was pre-prepared over the previous commission. Correct? Anybody in the staff to speak to that?
Yes. This is actually two projects. Project 295 is from Constant Creek to Edgemore, and then the western portion is project 447 from Constant Creek to Haverhill Road. The costs are all finalized. Notifications were mailed out to all of the property owners within the improvement district, notifying of their proposed assessments. The, tonight is a public hearing, where you guys can hear any objections to those proposed assessments. And then after the public hearing, you can consider levying the assessments. The property owners will have 30 days if they wish to pay in full to the city. And if no action is taken by them, then it will automatically go on to the tax, to Butler County, and then be placed as a special assessment on their taxes.
Okay.
Over 20 years.
What, what are the assessment versus the estimates? I mean, are they similar?
The total project, and we looked at this as a total project, and then split the benefit districts apart, because we had two separate benefit districts in this. The total project cost was $1,372,487.40. Of that total, the benefit district was responsible for $493,287.31. And I apologize, I read the wrong number. $551,922.12. And the final city at large cost for the both projects was $1,000,010,804.20. Stand for any questions, or?
Okay, any further questions from the commission? Comments?
One thing I might add, there was, on project 295, there was about a 10% reduction in what we previously estimated with the benefit district donors, to what their final actual would be. So we did see a decrease in what we told them in the beginning, it was about, right at almost 10%. And project 447 remained the same, the same as the petition requesting that project.
Is 447 the west one?
It is the west one. So their special assessments were the same that were on the petition to improve the project.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the commission? Herb, do you have any comments you want to add before we? Okay, we'll, at this time, open it up for public hearing, as we consider the assessments for Tuanda Avenue. Open up a public comment and hearing on the issue. If you come forward, please state your name and address.
My name's Lawna Whaley. My address is 850 Project Drive. I had some questions about the assessments. I was unaware that there was an earlier hearing on it. That's, I don't know how to get notified of that, but I didn't receive any notification on it. I wondered first, and I think I heard the answer, that the whole city's not being assessed for the work that was done from Constant Creek, I think he said, to Haverhill. And I'd like to understand the why that was not assessed against the city, since Tuanda's a main thoroughfare. And the amount of work that was done on that road was primarily done to improve the city, and not just that street. The addition to the sidewalk really only benefits the college campus, which is primarily not even El Dorado residents. And so I was wondering if somebody could answer why that wasn't assessed against the whole city, rather than just a few individuals.
Roughly about 2/3 of the entire project cost was borne, was, is being paid for by the city at large, the entire property tax base in the city. 1/3 of that, approximately 1/3, is being paid by an improvement district. And an improvement district is made up of adjacent property owners that share in the cost of improving the road.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned. The cost, to me personally, ends up to 9% of the total value of my property. And so it seems like an awfully large cost to me personally, for an improvement that wasn't extremely beneficial to me personally. So I'm a little concerned about that, that large cost. I also noticed that it said that if you don't pay it all upfront, that it will be added to your yearly taxes over a 20-year period at a percentage rate, but it doesn't state what that percentage rate is?
We do not know that rate until we actually go out to bonds on the project. So after this, we will then go out and bond the project and know that rate.
So how will we know whether it's beneficial to us to pay it upfront, or to pay it over a 20-year period, if we don't know what the percentage rate's going to be?
Do you have a market?
I have a, last time we issued bonds, we borrowed for less than 2%. And I don't, and I don't know what it's going to be today, but I'd say 3% would be the highest that we've borrowed.
So that was, that was, those were my questions. And my last question was, are all properties in that area assessed the same amount?
The ones, the ones on project 295, or Constant Creek to Edgemore Drive, are paying for what it costs to build a typical residential street in town. The city picks up any of those excess costs. So Tuanda Avenue is wider than a normal residential street, and the city at large picks up that cost. And we picked up all of the stormwater cost. Now, the owners to the west had some help from El Dorado Township and Butler County to help them, and their rate per square foot was significantly less than the property owners to be used.
So my question is, were all the owners in that area assessed the same amount, or is it a percentage of your property value, or?
They're all assessed the same amount. So we look at what costs are to be paid by the improvement district, and the total square foot of area within the improvement district, and came up with a cost per square foot. And on that project, it was 43.94 cents per square foot.
So I think I may be interjecting here. Your question is, what Scott's saying is, everybody was assessed the same dollar value. It depends on how much, on the size of your property, and what your dollar figure would be.
Yeah, and how far did you go off of the road to determine who got assessed those?
Typically, it's half the distance from the next intersecting street north. So that's our policy and practice with the city. Some of that varies, if I recall, because of, there's some areas up there that have already paid for two streets.
Well, in our area, there's, my house would fall on the north side of that half distance, except for, you probably don't count the cul-de-sac as an intersecting street. So, because we have a very long street there. Okay. Well, I, I'd like to protest the amount, but I don't know that it will make one bit of difference to you guys, but $7,200 for a short street does seem very high for the individual to have to cover. That's going to be, even over a 20-year period, that's going to be about $350 a year for all the individuals. And there's a lot of people on those streets that aren't going to be able to afford that. But, this is my input. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? I do not. Thank you.
I'm Don Aliceberger, 1285 South Pecan. I just want to thank the commission and the city staff for getting it done. It's a beautiful street, and I'm very satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aliceberger.
Thank you.
Alice Lockston, 809 Sharon Drive. I would just echo what the last speaker said, that in protest, or objection, rather, it is, it is a rather costly project for, you know, many people. And particularly, since it is a, pretty much a through street, that a lot of people are benefiting from it, but only a small portion picking up a large part of the bill on that. And my question, I think, is maybe already answered. I was, wanted to inquire about the percentage rate that if you don't pay it all at once, because that's, that's a big check of change, all at once. So, sounds like in that area, 2% to 3%.
Yes. And we could call our financial advisor, and maybe get a better idea of what that?
I mean, I think it's not going to be 3%. We haven't, we haven't borrowed at 3% in a long, in years and years. And so it won't be 3%. It'll be less than 3%.
So is that calculated in simple interest over the 20-year period then?
It's equal payments per year, so.
How is the interest charged, though? Is it simple interest?
Yes. It's simple interest.
I think it is.
Yeah, we just, when we do, when we figure the assessments, we'll plug in simple interest and divide it by, so it's 20 years, 20 times 12, times point 03, 003.
And I hesitated to, excuse me, and I hesitated to come tonight, because as I read this, it said that it does invite, you know, objection or objections of public hearing, but, you know, as I read through the rest of the letter, it does sound like it's already a foregone conclusion, that that is what's going to happen. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Probably. And the discussions that both of y'all brought up were ones that the commission had three years ago, and lots of public input. And it was the desire of the commission, and if I remember right, the piece in El Dorado, people wanted it. The majority of the people wanted it. And so it was the easier part. And the piece in the, that had both property in unincorporated Butler County, and in El Dorado, that was even harder to do. And it took, like Scott said, the township, and the county, and the city, the...
So what portion of that are you referring to, of the location?
From Constant Creek, no, Edgemore, to west, to Haverhill. But over the whole project, the city at large, it's kind of to both y'all's points about, it's a big road and lots of traffic. The city itself is paying for 2/3 of that road. And so I absolutely agree, 7,000 is a big number for a piece of road that you may not even have to use to get to your house. And the commission got it, too, and it was, and they had lots of people that said that. And what, what this hearing is really about is them now having the final cost, the complete cost of the project, and spreading those specials. Because this was all, all this work was done under state statutes that allow neighborhoods, essentially, to have the city do work for them. And, and that's, that's how we got here today.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The 2/3 that's being paid for by the city, though...
Come up to the...
Sorry. I just, it occurs to me that the 2/3 that's being paid for by the city is still being paid for by those of us in that area as well. So it just, I don't, I don't know how to impress upon you commissioners that this is a tremendous cost on, on young families that are trying to, you know, live here in El Dorado and raise their kids. And you're not just costing them the money today for the $7,200, but they're also going to be paying the city taxes for the other 2/3s. And I don't, I don't suppose there's anything to be done about it at this point in time, but it seems that you might want to reconsider the way that that's assessed, and assess it across the whole city in total, rather than, rather than breaking it out that way.
Then what would we, how would we go back to all the people that have paid for two streets in the past, and tell them?
Well, we paid for our individual streets when you paved those streets.
Everybody pays for two. Everybody pays for two.
Well, our, I don't know how you would associate that, but Tuanda is not a neighborhood street. It is, it is a city thoroughfare, just like Central, and Sixth Street, and Main Street are. And I don't know how those are assessed, or how those cost, but I...
And Olive, and Third, and Southern.
All, actually, all the same. No, Sixth Street, same. So everyone in El Dorado, and so, kind of back to your point, when a road is built, and as far back as we can find in any city records, the property owner paid for that first, paid for two streets. And so there are houses in El Dorado that are not on an improved street, and so they've never paid for any street in town. And then the lion's share of people have city-approved streets, and so they have paid for two streets.
Well, a few years ago, you improved our city street, our particular street, Frederick, and it was not nearly this cost. The cost of this is not just paving the street. You paved the street, and you did a lot of other things to the street besides that.
And property that are getting assessed today are not paying the bulk of those costs either. And so when we came down Frederick, did we just do a milling?
Milling overlays.
Yeah. Milling overlays are part, is the benefit that a property owner in El Dorado gets from the city for having an improved street.
You may, you have done just recently, like in the last year, milling overlay, but a couple of years ago, you came in and redid the street. And that was a special assessment at that time, too. Yes, there was.
There might have been some curbing gutter, that was replaced.
They completely tore the street out and relayed the street. They completely tore the street out and relayed the street. Because my, my house is on a corner on that street, and I protested the work because they did not fix the puddle that, that occurs every time there's any kind of moisture in the air. There's a puddle that occurs right there at that corner, and that puddle stinks to high heaven. And they came around and said, "Are you willing to sign up for this?" And I said, "Only on the condition that you fix that puddle." And they said they would, and they did not. And if you, if you doubt me, come on over to eight fifty Frederick after a rain and smell it, and you will understand what a horrific thing they left there when they came through and fixed the street. So, I know that I've already paid for that street once.
And just, in some of those instances, I don't recall maybe that project, but millin' overlays the city does cover. Now, if there's curb and gutter that needs to be replaced...
Yeah, this wasn't about that.
The city splits the cost for those property owners, so.
But, anyway, I, I don't know the answer to the question, except that I do know that seventy-two hundred dollars for a neighborhood where the average household home is about eighty thousand dollars is a, is a very high price to pay to live in El Dorado. That's...
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one else come forward, we will close the public hearing, move on with, with discussion from the commission. Any further discussion from the commission on these matters?
G twelve nineteen.
Well, with nothing else, I guess I would say I appreciate everybody who came down and the comments, and certainly, streets are, paving streets are expensive, and there is, in my opinion, there's a benefit across the whole neighborhood when we do that. So, that's, that's the reason behind the benefit district to do it. So, I, again, appreciate and, and sympathize with some of the cost, but it's certainly an improvement for the whole, whole neighborhood, in my opinion. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that ordinance number G one-two-one-nine and ordinance levying special assessments on certain property and pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, as heretofore authorized by resolution numbers twenty-seven thirty-one, twenty-seven fifty-six, twenty-seven thirty-eight, and twenty-seven fifty-seven of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? A roll call?
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badley?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes. Thank you very much. Move on to item number four in our agenda, which is vice mayor, appointment of a vice mayor. Nick has been our vice mayor this year. And at this time, we would appoint a new vice mayor, whether it's Nick again or...
And, and actually, your tradition and the commission form of government is that you rotate it to the next most senior member. And as you look at who's done it in the past, that would mean it's Chase's turn, but you, you of course have the ability to do whatever you wish, but that has been your tradition always.
Dangerous selection.
Are you, I guess the question is, Chase, will you do that? All right. Chase is willing to do that. I need a motion.
I move that we appoint Chase Locke as vice mayor of the great city of El Dorado, Kansas.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want this chair?
Don't the city meetings?
Item number five is our July meetings. I think we've got some conflicts coming up. Certainly, I think we, we have already moved to July fifth, have we not? Or is this something we need to act on right now?
That's done automatically via ordinance.
Yeah.
Anytime you have a holiday on a Monday, your meeting automatically falls to Tuesday. So, the question we have now is for the July eighteenth meeting. Jumps Across Kansas is that evening, and as the city is sponsoring that and put quite a bit of work into that, we thought you might want to go, and so, if you do, we need to reschedule that meeting.
What time does Jumps Across Kansas, I mean, it's an all-day fair, isn't it?
It's an evening event.
It's an evening, isn't it?
And I want to say six-thirty.
It's six or six-thirty.
You know that, too.
One second, I'll find it.
Well, I, with that, we certainly would like to go to that, as a commission, represent ourselves there. Well, I mean, I don't know whether...
I agree.
Move into Tuesday, if that works for everybody?
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Is that what we're wanting to do, is Tuesday?
Tuesday, the nineteenth?
Completely up to you.
Does that work for everybody's calendar?
Sure.
Okay. I need a motion.
I move to reschedule July eighteenth city commission meeting to July seventeenth.
July nineteenth.
Nineteen.
You're going to put it on Sunday.
Second is the correction.
I can be there on Sunday.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose the same sign, motion carries five to zero. So, we will have July fifth and July nineteenth at six, six-thirty in both cases. If I don't put it in there, I might forget it. Okay? Thank you. New business discussion items. Anything to be brought before the commission, a new business?
I'd like to ask Jean a question. Friends of the Lake, July fourth, what's going to happen out at the lake? Friends of the Lake, July fourth, what is going to go on out there? They're going to have a parade and...
They have a parade that goes through some of the key areas of...
Can you come up to that? There's a lot of people that don't know what goes on at the lake on...
There's a parade that goes through part of the park, and they're going to have a watermelon feed, a little store there, and of course, there'll be lots of people there, probably around thirty thousand people will be there.
The parade is in Blue Stimp Point, or...
Yeah. It is.
I just was under the, I was told there wasn't a lot of recognition for what goes on at the lake on, on July fourth, and I just wanted you to have a chance to tell everybody what you all are doing out there.
We need, you know, town folks who are certainly welcome to come out, too. We'll have a lot of people there from out of state. Weekend, we had the governor's campout there on Friday night. The tents blew away for a bit. They resurrected those, and the next day, they had an incredible thing. This coming weekend, we have a mud run, a tractor pull, and a concert. So, we're trying to improve all the activities. I know that the Kansas State Wildlife Parks and Tourism is trying to improve the visibility of all the lakes in the state of Kansas. So, more and more activities. Next, next year, we'll have a great big festival, music festival, similar to the country stampede that they had in Manhattan. But this year, we have this event, and then there are many others. And I want to comment, Jen Cook, compliment her, because she's, I think they're probably getting at the point that El Dorado Lake is very important to our community, and we're going to try to do an impact study there this summer. It's hard, because like this weekend, we had people there, had all kinds of vendors there, and next weekend, last year when we had the mud run, the majority of people that came were from out of town. So, we want local folks to come, too, but it's really nice to have all those people come in. I'm being amazed at the facility that we have here. We're very proud of it. I know the city is, too.
And Jean, you may, Commissioner Lewis asked about concerts like they used to have, and I think you're actually doing them. You may tell them, tell them about that, too.
Yeah, if you would.
The, you mean the concert that's coming up next year?
Well, don't you know, don't you have like five weekends you're having?
Yes. I'm, I'm not aware of all the things that happen. I don't have them in front of me because there's so much going on, and, you know, I go from one event to the other thinking about that. But they're trying harder and harder to have more. Seth Wood, who's the park manager, Seth Turner, he would like to have an event every weekend. Well, we're working on that this month. Had, we'll have three right there in a row. And then they do have more concerts. We'll have a concert this coming weekend. Rusty Larson, who is from Leon, is going to do a concert that night. And then, I can't remember all the other events that they have planned this year, but you will see a great influx of people coming in from not just Sedgwick County, which is normal, but from all over the place to come to the events that happen at Lake El Dorado. So, it's growing, and we appreciate Jen for publicizing this thing and, and all the other things that are going on in El Dorado. I'm also part of the CBB, so as you guys know, you appointed me, so it's exciting to see all the things that are happening in our community.
Okay.
So, come enjoy.
Thank you.
Because I would say veterans reunion signs have popped up around town, and it's something that happens in July also, out at the lake, on a regular basis. Happy to host that. Happy that that's hosted here, very much so. Okay? Anything, new business from the commission?
I'll just, every year, when it starts getting hot, I just remind everyone to check on your neighbors, especially some of the older folks, and just make sure they've, they've got some way to keep cool. And then, be sure that when you're out walking around or driving around, make sure if you see animals, you don't have to worry about, down around South Algeany, about the four-hundred block, for about a five-block area, my wife's got that covered. But the rest of the town, just watch out for animals that don't have shade, don't have water. It's, if you see, see an animal that thinks being abused, don't be afraid to report it.
Commissioner Lewis?
I didn't make it to the housing with the Inc. this, this week. Did you go?
I did. I can report on that. You have anything?
No.
I'll report on a few things. El Dorado Inc., just today was a connected caffeinate, and Walnut Brewery was our program to talk about their, their startup, their successes in the past three years. It's a great story, if you get a chance to visit them, whether you like beer or not, they've got good sandwiches, and they serve water, too, if that's what you prefer. And actually, they're making root beer, so it doesn't have to be an alcohol beverage if that's what you fancy. Library, I guess I would report that there are, it's a busy week with computer classes and, and book borrowing and soccer clinic and book club discussions, so I would encourage everybody to either go down to the library, look on the website, and see what, what interests you there. I'm on the library board, and that's, that's what's coming up this week. REAP, I don't have any report, no meeting to report there. Inc. Housing, we did meet last week. El Dorado Inc. and the city both are working diligently on putting a housing assessment tool, it's called Together, which is quite a bit of information associated to, to necessary for a CDBG grant process.
Not even necessarily that, but this hat process and going up and having those meetings will, they will be able to suggest funding that's out there that we could be able to apply for for housing.
Yeah, it's, it's a tool that's used to at least assess the wide variety of housing and what we can do to affect that, if anything, in some cases.
But I do think we are planning on applying for a community development block grant this year, this cycle. That'll be a housing, a neighborhood-focused project.
Yeah. And the housing committee kind of talked about where, where that could be focused, or some of those funds could be focused. So, look, look forward to more coming out of that. On Main Street, we kind of heard a presentation on that, so I won't, I won't go over that anymore. So, thank you for that. Anything else for the commission, new business?
I can report on Parks and Rec. We had an advisory board meeting last Wednesday. According to Kevin, we've had a great start to the summer activities. The Twilight Swim that they held at Forest Park, there were two-hundred-and-ninety-one swimmers. Average is about a hundred-and-twenty, so he was real pleased with that. Prairie Trails, the number is up at that swimming pool also, and if that continues, they may need to add an additional lifeguard. The pool will be closed down July fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. There is a regional swim meet, and so it'll be closed those three days. Summit Park is done, they had a schedule, which is great. However, we've been having some vandalism in the parks. Some people think as soon as you put up a soap dispenser or a paper towel dispenser, it's theirs and it's gone. So, keep an eye out for any possible vandalism in the parks. The advisory board was very excited about the disc off course. And my two cents worth, grass clippings. The idea behind mowing your yard is to mow the grass clippings back into the yard, because that way it accesses nutrients to the grass. Grass clippings on the asphalt does no good, except plug up stormwater. So, please, mulch your yard, not the city street. Off my soapbox.
Okay. Anything else, new business?
Solid waste hasn't met yet, so I don't have nothing on that.
Thank you. I do have one topic I'd like to get, discuss while we're all together and in a meeting. And that is, I think we've all been contacted about a drainage ditch on Hillside. I think, and I will share that I've had a conversation, I've only been contacted by one person on that, on that block, and that, and that person indicates that it's a, it's a widespread problem down the street. So, I promised them that we would have this discussion, and I know that they've had contact with everybody else. So, what I would like to do is, is for us all to be on the same page on, on, on that issue and that topic, and understand also, and give Herb a heads up that I would be talking about this, understand also what's been done in the past. I know this commission has even given a little bit of direction about cleaning out some of the ditch around the trees, which were by the, the car wash area, but I think we all need to be on the same page and, and understand what, what we want to do about it, what can be done, and what can be done about it, if anything. So, with that, I, I would say that I spoke with Mrs. Van Khouser, and I told her that I am certainly willing to sit in on a neighborhood meeting, if that's what the neighborhood would like, and we can talk about what it means to, to, for the city to, to make improvements to that ditch, if that's what they want to do. And, and it's not much different than the street discussion we just had. It does take an investment on all parties to do that, so that's a fact. And with that, I still stand ready... And with that, I still stand ready to meet with the group and talk about what can be done about it, if the neighborhood so chooses. So, I would like any other commissioners to weigh in and let us know your thoughts. I think we've all been contacted.
I've had...no, I was just going to start. Have the costs ever been estimated on what it would take to do what they want done?
They have, and it's over a billion dollars. There's two hurdles that are on that as well. Number one is, the city doesn't have easement or access to that. That's private property. So, that hurdle would have to be a jump.
Okay.
And second, that ditch is more or less a tributary, a constant creek. So, there would be permitting hurdles to do any sort of permits with the Corps of Engineers, Division of Water Resources, and Kansas Wildlife and Parks. The last time it was investigated in depth was prior to the paving of Oil Hill Road in 2005. At that time, the Corps of Engineers told the city they wouldn't allow any modifications to the channel itself. Now, some of those rules have reduced because of action of Congress and what EPA is allowed to do with the Clean Water Act. So, that and being the no easements back there was why the decision the city made in 2005 to divert all of the street runoff and out of that ditch and handle it within the right-of-way of Oil Hill Road. So, about 90, 95% of the water now is not carried in that ditch. Really, what that ditch is doing is handling local runoff and backyards. The city's done cleanup work. I was talking to Brad with Public Works earlier today. He estimated about three times in the last three years have they done some sort of work in there. I know Parks and Rec has sent crews back there with mediars to do cleanup and work. First Southern Baptist Church, I hope that's correct, has had an issue and does cleanup work there as well.
Notice First Baptist is doing some paving or grappling or something, but it looks like a lot of material is stacked back in there. Is there...I mean, in some, under our new waste, not wastewater, stormwater utility, I mean, if they add to paving back there, doesn't that imply that there's some responsibility on that part?
To my knowledge, they're just adding one handicap stall up, fallen out of concrete. They did some impervious gravel, some upkeep of some gravel that really deteriorated and been overgrown.
Okay.
But I haven't been out there and talked over the while about the project specifically.
Well, I don't think it's paved, but it might be millings or something like that.
To your point, yes. When you...what your fee to the city is for the utility is based on impervious material, so, I mean, impervious square footage. And so, if they pay, if anyone pays a gravel parking lot, their assessment goes up, because you've got to...we've got to handle the runoff that creates. By the same token, there's incentives to handle runoff yourself and reduce your fee based on capturing and getting rid of that stormwater, not putting it in our system.
But if there is...I guess the question is, to me, I mean, there's that, but I don't hear that the increase in fee would then affect that ditch in particular necessarily.
Correct.
It would be the responsibility of the work to enhance that or deal with that ditch, if they were doing it. And that would probably be a plan review and a staff review thing at that time. Is that correct?
There was policies that were put in place. There was an ad hoc committee appointed by the commission at the time of the adoption and creation of the stormwater utility. And they put in place procedures for neighborhood improvement projects, stormwater projects. And the policy reads that the city at large would kick in 25% out of the stormwater utility fund, and the remainder would be paid for by improvement district.
So, that's what we've communicated.
How much of a...how much of an area are we talking about?
Really, the ditch goes from what would be...
Fifth?
Fifth Avenue?
Well...
It might be Fourth, Fourth Avenue South. Or if Fourth would actually intersect through Oil Hill Road.
Okay. Quite a distance.
Well, I'll share that I've been, since I've been on the commission, I think, spoken with the resident and several of the family. And I'll say kudos to staff. I think the first few times I reached out to you, not knowing anything about it, we did go out and repeatedly clean it up. I made it clear to them that not one of us could do anything without two others. And it sounds like, I mean, for a project that big, that there's going to have to be a lot more buy-in from that community, I mean, that neighborhood, that area. I would...I mean, I would love to find a resolution, but I think with something that large, that's going to be what is going to have to be done.
Typically, like maintaining a ditch, the city isn't on a tributary like that, isn't allowed to do much more than trim brush and not even really change the side slopes too much.
And you can't...I mean, it's against federal law to put a piece of equipment in a streambed. And so, when we do that kind of work, we absolutely are sitting on the bank, because if you're in it, then you get to go to the big prison. And it's a federal crime, and the United States of America takes their streams very seriously. And in this case, it's not even...we don't even have a right to be there to do this work. And so, it's just like having to drive in my backyard to do stormwater work. I don't have any right...the city doesn't have any right to be there. And so, to even do that work, we shouldn't even do the work, and it's only...no, we shouldn't do the work. It's public-private benefit of public resources.
So, how far in...I mean, right that the ditch continues on right there next to Brahms, between Brahms and Subway. And I imagine where that, where all of that improvement has happened, is that easement, or was that done by the projects there, done by Brahms when they built Subway? Do we know, is that an easement there? And how far north does that easement reach?
Just to their Brahms is North property line.
Okay.
And that has been reshaped multiple times. And we're allowed to do a little more modification on that, because it's adjacent to the highway. There's distances we can go off of a highway and do a little more maintenance and soil stabilization type work.
But for this really to go any further, the residents of the neighborhood need to ask for and relinquish that area as an easement for the city to even begin?
That's step one.
Step one. Step two would be to understand the cost associated, the shared cost associated with doing it.
And even, and I'm not sure that step two isn't talking to the United States of America and the state of Kansas and ask what would they allow?
Okay.
Because there's no guarantee that they'll let you put it in a pie.
Okay.
Don't you think, Scott?
Yeah, in 2005, that's what we were told at that time. Now, some things have changed, and we haven't asked them again since eleven years.
But we first need the residents to tell the city that you want to call that question.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. That's background for me and everybody here hearing at the same time. Anything else the commission want to share regarding this?
I just told them to contact Herb and Scott. I didn't know how to answer.
Well, again, if a neighborhood meeting is organized, I said I would, and I'll follow through with meeting with the neighborhoods, to the citizens, to talk about the steps and what it takes to get something done.
Does she have the petition?
She does not. I can't remember. It's been awful. No, I don't think...I don't believe she does.
To my knowledge, no, she doesn't. So, okay. That's all I have on that one. Anybody else have new business? Okay, we'll move to city manager's report. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to talk about a couple of things. First is to tell the commission and also the community that July 4th, the city is going to have its annual Fourth of July celebration. It'll start at 10:00 in the morning in East Park. And then, that night, the city's fireworks display will be in conjunction with the Broncos game at McDonald's Stadium. And so, and again, as always, it's on the Fourth of July. It's not on Saturday, Sunday, so it'll be on the Fourth for everyone to participate in. And there'll be more advertising about the specifics of that, when everything's going on coming up. And then, last week, or last meeting, we heard about a house on Revelly Lane. And so, after your meeting, we looked into it, and I can tell you about it now if you want to know. But we have been having work done at that piece of property for years and years and years. And I can probably show you all the dates from 2009 to today, right now, if you wanted to see it, if you have any interest in that. But understand, it has not been ignored. There have been thousands and thousands of dollars spent improving that property in the last 12 months. And so, if you want to know what we've done, I'm happy to share with that with you.
Just a very brief summary of some of the things.
In the last fall, the city required them to put in a working heater and air conditioner. That happened in, I think, November. We inspected them and found the wiring deficient and made them improve the wiring. We found a sewer broken. They just got done putting in a $5,000 new sewer main. We've made them clean it up several occasions, and actually, it's maybe a semi-annual event. And if you drive by today, it is not the worst-looking property in the city of El Dorado. But we have been engaged in that piece of property for years and years and years. And that, the ones I just told you about are in the last seven, eight months. Those are the big ones. But I think the...we took two dump truck loads out that showed up on citywide cleanup. They have ordered another dump truck or two, and so, I don't know where all their stuff comes from, but they're part of the programs we have in making the house more habitable.
Now, I'm assuming the landlord, of course, has to pay for all that, but is there any other comeback on the landlord?
Well, the beauty of this one is that particular landlord likes to sell property on contract. And so, it takes longer when a landlord does that, because they will try to deny responsibility and blame it on the homeowner. But of course, there's no recorded instrument, so we have to work through those legalities, and that's what's happened here.
Any more questions on Revelly Lane residents? Is there any more in the manager's report?
No, sir.
I've got one question for you, Herb, on the campaign signs that are out. Are they supposed to be not an easement? Can they sit at the easement?
It cannot, and they can't...I mean, so they can't sit in the right-of-way. Kind of our process, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but before the election, once the people have signed up, we send them a letter and tell them, please don't put it in the right-of-way. We talk about that with them. And so, if you look today, Sixth Street, there's a couple pieces of property that have a candidate running for sheriff signs in the right-of-way. The two pieces of property, one, we've contacted landlord, because we can't get anyone to answer the door. And they were going to call the sheriff, that candidate, and tell him again that he needs to move them. But yes, we will pick them up. If they're not too far off, we'll even move them. And so, yes, you can't, and there are some violations today.
Scott, is there a rule of thumb where there is no sidewalk? Just, I mean, is there a...
Fourteen and a half feet, fifteen feet.
Okay, so, five paces, basically, off the curb.
Five big paces?
Five big paces off the curb?
Yep. Or if you have power in the front of your yard, that's a good sign, too, because the power is generally sitting in the right-of-way. So, Sixth Street's a good example, right on the backside of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Herb?
No, sir.
Along the same lines of Fourth of July, I guess I would say that fireworks are coming. And I think the youth commission has started an effort to try and educate a little better. They took on that task this year, so I'm in hopes that some of that's a little better. And I guess I would remind, not unlike the grass clippings, I certainly would remind everybody to pay attention to those hours of operation, be sensitive to your neighbors and your neighbors' pets, please. And if you want to have a block party, it takes a permit to come down and block off the street and do that, so involve your neighbors and do that. But be respectful as we come onto the Fourth of July. We appreciate that. We'd like to keep fireworks as part of our tradition, and respecting the neighbors and everything helps us keep that as part of our tradition. So, okay. Last thing on our agenda would be executive session for matters related to non-elected personnel to move into executive session. Do we want to say to 8:00? That puts us 20 minutes. Does that get us started? Or do we want more?
It's a start. It gets a start.
Eight, 10, go 30?
Let's go 30 minutes, 8:10. Need a motion to be in executive session until 8:10.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting at...oh, that's adjourned, sorry. I'm going to recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected personnel to convene at the scheduled meeting in the city commission room at 8:10 p.m.
Second.
Okay, so moving to second. Any further discussion? If you're in favor, say aye. We will convene into executive session and return at 8:10. Thank you.